So it's, um...
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming once again to the Hanover Town Meeting for 2025. My name is Jeremy Eggleton. I'm the town moderator. I'm calling the meeting to order at this point. Obviously, if you're still in the process of checking in, that's fine. You'll make your way to your seat and be able to participate going forward. We have a few preliminaries before we get down to the business of the night. So first and foremost, what I'd like to do is introduce distinguished citizen Nancy Carter to return to the town meeting and give us the pledge of allegiance. So let's all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Select Board Emerita. Next, I'd like to draw the body's attention to the town moderator's message at the front of the yellow pages in your town report. This guy right here, page 18 of the town report, which precedes the warrant. Included in the message are the town moderator's rules for the town meeting, and I would ask for a motion to accept these rules as the governing rules for this meeting. Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you very much. Any debate, discussion, or commentary on the rules? Hearing none, I will call the question. All in favor of adopting the rules, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The rules are adopted unanimously. Pretty good. Okay. The next thing that I would like to do is recognize somebody who's served the town profoundly over the last three years or so. Behind me, walking across the way in the yellow jacket, is a woman named Bobby Hitchcock. Bobby's term as the town clerk and the chief town clerk election officer is terminating tonight, and she hasn't run for election again, but her service to the town has been invaluable over the past three years. And I'd just like to have the town recognize her and give her a nice round of applause. She hated that. But there it is. Okay. Next, I'd like to introduce the select board, and then I'm gonna have Rob Hausman, our town manager, introduce the rest of the staff. So on my left, Joanna Whitcomb. On my left, Jared Burke. On my left, Athos Rassias. Also on my left, Jenny Chamberlain, all members of the select board, and Carrie Callahan here on my right. Introducing the town staff and department heads.
Absolutely. Thank you. First, I want to extend my thanks to the select board for giving me the opportunity to serve as your town manager. Their support has been amazing, and I'd also recognize the department heads who've made this transition much easier than it could have been. With that, I'd ask each one to stand, and then at the end, we'll give them our appreciative applause. First, Ellen Bullion, our administrative services finance director. We have Norm Bernash, assessing director. Mike Gilbert, fire chief. I should go down the line, John. That's John Sherman, Parks and Rec director. Corey Stevens, IT director. Ruby Simon, Howe Library. Jeff Metfler, Aetna Library. Jim... Jim Martin, our police chief. Peter Kobaki, Public Works Director. And Jen Murray, our planning, zoning, and codes director. Thank them all.
Thank you very much. Before we get into the substance of each article that's on the warrant tonight, I'd like to have Carrie Callahan speak a little bit on a preparatory basis, just giving a few advance remarks about some of the issues tonight, and then we'll cover them in detail as we go through the specific articles.
Thank you, Jeremy. So I'm on for warrant article number 18, but I wanted to add upfront my thanks to our terrific staff for the tremendous effort involved in developing not only the budget, but also the initiatives and plans that stand behind the numbers themselves. This year, we substantially decompressed the budget process, spreading elements of it over months, and the actual public hearing to adopt the warrant articles was spread over two weeks. We feel this process made decision-making better, but the back-to-back public hearings contributed to the need for three technical corrections for which the select board apologizes. Sorry for the feedback also. Okay. Closer and ladder. Okay. Thank you. All right. So these essentially constitute an errata, and here's a preview of what those are so you're not surprised when they come up. In Article 10, which authorizes additions to capital reserve funds, the warrant article language voted upon by the select board on April 7th was subsequently agreed by the select board on April 14th to be increased by adding over $620,000 to the sewer fund and $173,000 to the water fund. We did not, however, formally amend our April 7th vote. However, the language in the published warrant article before you in the annual report is what the select board intended and discussed, but Joanna will offer an amendment to align the voted-upon warrant article with the published warrant article. It's probably more than you needed to know, but that's what's gonna happen. In Article 11, we will drop the $44,500 withdrawal from the Municipal Transportation Improvement Fund, which should have been a separate warrant article. Joanna will amend the article accordingly. Lastly, in Article 13, the last sentence will be struck, which was inadvertently published but had been properly deleted by the select board in its vote. Jenny will amend to fix this error. Okay. Preview of a few changes that you'll hear on the fly. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Okay. To introduce Article 5 and read... To read Article 5 as a motion for the body, Mr. Burke.
Good evening. Article 5, to choose the following town officers to be elected by majority vote: One Advisory Board of Assessor for term of three years; Two Fence Viewers, each for a term of one year; Two Surveyors of Wood and Timber, each for a term of one year; Such officers as the town may judge necessary for managing its affairs. In Hanover, as in many other New England towns, we maintain...
Jared, hold on one second.
I haven't got to the motion yet. I haven't got to the motion yet.
Okay. Go ahead.
I will make the motion. Don't worry. I'm still introducing it. So in Hanover, as in many New England towns, we maintain two ceremonial positions that date back to colonial times. Fence viewers were originally responsible for settling disputes between neighbors and determining responsibility for fence repairs. Surveyors of the wood and timber ensure that timber was cut to legal standards and was suitable for designated uses. Today, we continue to elect individuals to these roles as a way to honor their dedication and service to our town. We also nominate individuals to the Advisory Board of Assessors to support professional assessing staff by providing local input and oversight on property assessment matters. So I move to nominate the following persons for the following offices: Advisory Board of Assessors, one-year term of three years, H. McIntyre Gardner; Three Fence Viewers, each for a term of one year, Matt Marshall, Sarah Packham, and Bruce Simpson; And Two Surveyors of the Wood and Timber, each for a term of one year, Timothy Bent and James Kennedy; Such other officers as the town may judge necessary for managing its affairs. May I... Do I have a second?
Do we have a second for the motion, Article 5? Yes, we have a second. Thank you. Any comment, questions, concerns, observations on Article 5? Hearing none, I will call the question. All in favor of Article 5, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Article 5 passes. To introduce Article 6, Ms. Chamberlain.
Hello? There we go. Okay. Article 6. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 for the purpose of funding the Hanover Climate Adaptation Planning Project and to authorize the select board to apply for, accept, and expend funds through the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, NHDES, Clean Water State Revolving Fund, known as CWSRF program, including up to $100,000 in principal loan forgiveness in accordance with the program requirements. Further, to authorize the issuance of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, which is RSA 331, for the full loan amount with the understanding that up to $100,000 of the principal will be forgiven upon meeting all program conditions. This appropriation shall be non-lapsing until June 30th, 2030, or until the project is completed, or until all funds have been expended in accordance with NHDES program requirements.
Thank you. Please note that when we... If we act on this article, it will be by ballot vote. So this will not be a voice vote. You have in your packet a sheaf of small papers, one with a pink... a pink sheaf, and then several ballots on the front. And one of them is labeled Article 6. So you will use that ballot when you come down and place your vote into the box right over there on that table. Okay?
Oh, mine's pink.
And then you'll circle no or check no, whatever you need to do to demonstrate what your decision is. Do that, and then put it in the box. Some people tear off the piece that they want and just put in the one that... Excuse me. The one that, you know, if you're voting yes, you might tear off yes and put it in the box. So however you want to express your intention, go for it with the ballot. You can tear it in half and just put yes in the box or no in the box, depending on what your vote is. Okay? Okay. So that's how the process is going to work, and the article, because it is a bond issue under RSA 33:1, will have to pass by a three-fifths majority, not just a preponderance. So that having been explained, the motion is on the table. Do I have a second? I see a second. Thank you very much. Before we move on to voting, is there any comment, questions, concerns?
Yeah. So I've gotten some questions as to what does this all mean? And this is basically a way that we can get reimbursed for our sewer project. And the way we've been paying for this project is through our sewer fund and the undesignated fund balance, and the project will allow us to get this cost from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Water State Revolving Fund that will reimburse that fund through a loan forgiveness program received by New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. Still a lot of words. It's a way for us to get some state funding for our sewer.
Yes. When you come down... We will have debate on this. I just remembered one item Tracy reminded me. When you come down, bring your pink slip, okay? Bring your pink slip along with your ballot so that we can just check off Article 6 on it. Okay? All right. Any thoughts, comments, questions, concerns, observations, debate on Article 6? Okay. I will open the voting on Article 6. Please make your way in an orderly fashion down here. We will have... Leave the floor open for this voting purpose for about 10 minutes, and then you will have a further hour to bring your ballot down and cast it. No. Each person should come down and vote. Thank you. Huh?
Or maybe we... Maybe we take this down?
Or maybe we, maybe we take this down.
It's a good way to keep us moving, right? Although, probably don't.
Okay, thank you very much. The ballot boxes will remain open for the full hour, so until, excuse me, until 8:25 on that particular issue. So if anybody hasn't voted on Article 6, you may still cast your ballot until 8:25. I heard some folks asking about the results of today's ballot voting, which was conducted throughout the day from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Those results are being tabulated at this time. Typically, we get the results about halfway through the meeting on a preliminary basis. They're not the absolute final results. But we should have information about that during the meeting tonight. Okay, turning to Article 7, Ms. Chamberlain, once again.
Okay, Article 7, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $19,375 for deposit into the Land and Capital Improvement Fund, and to fund this appropriation by authorizing the withdrawal of this amount from the unassigned fund balance. The amount appropriated is the equivalent of 50% of the total collected in land use change tax in the fiscal year 2024.
Do I have a motion? Thank you, so moved. Do I have a second? Thank you, I do have a second for Article 7. Would you like to offer any contextual remarks?
Sure. Article 7 and Article 8 both deal with the money that is generated from the land use change tax. And what we have been doing historically is to put 50% of that into this capital improvement fund and 50% of this into the conservation fund. We voted to establish the capital improvements fund back in '99 and the conservation fund back in '99. Do people want more context?
Any questions, concerns, observations, thoughts, comments from the body? Hearing none, I will call the question. All in favor of Article 7 say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The article passes, Article 7 passes. Article 8, Ms. Chamberlain.
This may sound a little familiar. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $19,375 for deposit into the Land and Capital Improvements Fund and to fund this appropriation by authorizing the withdrawal of this amount from the unassigned fund balance. The amount appropriated is 50% of the total collected in land use change tax in the fiscal year 2024. And that was a test, and you all passed.
Do I have a motion to move Article 8? Thank you, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second, thank you. Any context?
This is the other, the flip side of putting the money in the capital improvement fund. We take that land use change tax and put 50% in the conservation fund.
Okay, yes. No, you really can't be heard, Bernie.
Just a question, what does it take to withdraw money from the conservation fund?
That is a good...
Does that take a vote of the selectmen, or is it some other way?
Conservation Commission, but Rob, I think, can take this.
It's the Conservation Commission after a public hearing.
Any further questions, thoughts, comments, concerns, observations? Hearing none, I will call the question on Article 8. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes, Article 8 passes. Article 9, Ms. Chamberlain.
Article 9, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $34,505 for deposit into the Municipal Transportation Improvement Fund and to fund this appropriation by authorizing the withdrawal of this amount from the unassigned fund balance. This amount is equivalent to the total transportation fee surcharge for each motor vehicle registered in the Town of Hanover, which is $5 per vehicle, during fiscal year 2024.
Okay, do I have a motion moving Article 9? Thank you, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Thank you, I have a second. Any thoughts, context for that, Ms. Chamberlain?
Pursuant to RSA 261, 153, the Town of Hanover in May 2000 established this fund. It's something we're allowed to do by the state, to basically put aside some money for transportation improvements.
Any comments, questions, concerns, observations? Bernie? Nothing from Bernie. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion passes, Article 9 passes. So Article 10 is before us. We're going to read the article. This is one of the motions that require, or one of the articles that did require a technical amendment. We'll get to that momentarily. But introducing the article and reading it for the record is Joanna Whitcomb.
So I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,936,412 and authorize payment into existing capital reserve funds in the following amounts, for the purposes for which such funds were established. This is a long one. Ambulance equipment capital reserve fund with funding to come from the ambulance fund, $163,000. Building maintenance and improvement capital reserve fund with funding to be raised through taxation, $252,000. Dispatch equipment and dispatch center enhancements capital reserve fund with funding to be raised through taxation, $28,800. Fire department vehicle and equipment capital reserve fund with funding to come from the fire fund, $162,000. Highway construction and maintenance equipment capital reserve fund with funding to be raised through taxation, $542,375. Parking operation vehicles and parking facility improvement capital reserve fund with funding to come from the parking fund, $84,000. Police vehicles and equipment capital reserve fund with funding to be raised through taxation, $142,000. Road construction and improvements capital reserve fund with funding to be raised through taxation, $75,000. Sewer equipment and facilities improvements capital reserve fund with funding to come from the wastewater treatment facility fund, $978,567. Water treatment and distribution equipment and system capital reserve fund with funding to come from the water utility fund, $509,000.
Thank you, do I have a second on that motion? Yes, sir, thank you, Jeff. So before we get into debate on the motion, I know there's a technical correction, so there's a motion to amend from Ms. Whitcomb.
So I offer an amendment to Article 10, adding $621,567 to the sewer fund and $173,330 to the water fund. This amendment has shown what you see on the warrant. So we'll need a second for that.
Okay, stand by.
And you have a second.
Wait a minute.
So we don't need that.
We do, okay. So here's the scoop, here's what's going on here. What you read in this document is the correct warrant article with the correct numbers. The issue is that at the Select Board, when they voted to approve this warrant article, this wasn't the language that they approved. So what we are doing now is retroactively ratifying Article 10 as the correct warrant article. Does that make sense?
You're fixing our mistake. Thank you.
Okay. So, does anybody have any, this is on the motion to amend now. Does anyone have comment?
Need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have a second to the motion to amend? Thank you. On the motion to amend, is there any comment or question? It's a complicated concept, but is there anyone out there who needs more information as they think about this particular motion to amend? Okay, oh yes, sir. Don.
Just to clarify, the numbers that you read for the amendment will amend the final two numbers in that column, so it'll be $621,361 for the sewer instead of 978?
No.
It'll be 978, the warrant is actually correct.
Yep.
But what, at the Select Board meeting, we didn't have the right number. So what you have here is correct, and what I read was correct, but we had to modify it because at the Select Board meeting, we didn't vote on this language.
So shouldn't you, the director, that we spoke before?
Well, this was, according to our attorney, this is, this, we're asking you to do it because we're in this forum.
Essentially, you are the legislative body for the Town of Hanover, and you are being asked to ratify or correct the decision of the executive, which is the Select Board. And our town council is happy to speak on this issue.
So this is null and void, like said, for, yes, this is null and void.
The Select Board's, the Select Board has not approved the article that is written in here, and so we're looking to first ratify the approval of this article and then have the town vote on this article. So this is the actual correct article, but when the Select Board voted to put it on the warrant, they got the numbers wrong. And so now we're asking the town collectively to ratify the correct article, in other words, to affirm that this is the article that will be voted on, and then to vote on it if it passes. Is that correct, Laura?
No, their work is not null and void. Hi, everyone, I'm Laura Spector-Morgan, I'm the town attorney. There were two budget hearings, and the Select Board voted on the first half of the budget at the first budget hearing, the first half of the warrant at the first budget hearing, and the second half of the warrant at the second budget hearing. There were changes made to Articles 10 and 11 between those two meetings, but the Select Board did not actually vote on those changes at the second hearing. But they approved the warrant as you have it. So a question was raised as to whether or not these articles were properly presented. In order to avoid there being any question about the legality of the appropriations, we suggested that the Select Board offer an amendment to make it very clear that this is what they intend and this is what they recommend. So that's the amendment that has been offered. I believe there's been a second?
There has been a second on the amendment request, yes.
And so now, the question is, do you all vote to approve the amendment that the selectmen recommends and always intended, but just didn't quite take the right procedural vote on? So that's all.
So, agreed, this is very complicated. But the bottom line is, the Select Board approved the warrant as drafted, so this is the correct language. But they typically will go through each article and approve it separately, and in between the time when the first, the article was first presented and when they finally approved it as the final article as part of this warrant, it changed. And so they realized after the fact that they hadn't voted to approve the article the first time around. So what this vote will do is retroactively ratify or confirm the Select Board's decision to place this warrant article on the warrant. And this is the amount, what you see in front of you in black and white, what was noticed to the public, will be the appropriation in question if it passes.
So if I'm reading this correctly, the amendment that you're offering has amounts that are much smaller than what appear in this warrant?
No, the amendment asks the town to confirm that this is the correct number. What you see here in this Article 10 as noticed, so in other words, for example, that we will be appropriating $978,567 for sewer equipment and facilities improvement under Article 10.
And where did the 621,361?
That was, I presume, in the original question that was presented at the first budget hearing. And then between the first budget hearing and the second budget hearing, when this warrant as in total was finalized, that number changed, and so...
Went up.
Right, it went up.
And the same thing with the water.
Exactly. These numbers that you see in front of you here are not going up tonight, and they're not going down tonight.
Okay.
This question is asking you to correct essentially an administrative oversight.
Okay. The other minor picky detail was that when you read out the building maintenance and improvement capital reserve fund, I heard you say $252,000 instead of $251,000.
Sorry, it was $251,000.
Thank you.
It's a lot of numbers, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to call the question.
So we have a motion on the floor to call the question, must pass by a two-thirds majority. So all in favor of the motion to call a question, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion passes. The question is called. All in favor of Article 10 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, I apologize, thank you. We're closing the parentheses on the motion to amend. So this is on the motion to amend. The question was called on the motion to amend. So all in favor of the motion to amend, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you. That amendment passes now. Is there any further debate, concern, questions, or observations concerning Article 10 as amended?
I have one on the right.
Hearing none.
I have a quick question.
My mental calculation, between this article and the next one, the sum total is about $3.5 million, which is roughly 10% of the budget requested in Article 18. I'm wondering why such a large amount of money isn't, is part of the operating budget, since you're asking for money to build, to buy things that operate the town?
That's a very good question. Rob?
If I can comment? These warrant articles are required by the Department of Revenue Administration, sorry, to be voted on as separate articles. Article 18 that has our operating budget excludes these dollars.
Is that because they're capital reserve dollars as opposed to operating funds?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Further questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, I'll call the question on Article 10 as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion passes, Article 10 passes. Now introducing Ms. Whitcomb once again for Article 11. Same issue.
Not quite as complicated.
Not quite as complicated.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,684,200.
1728744.
Oh, yeah, because I have to amend it.
Because I have to subtract the 45.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, it's not amended yet.
Thank you.
It's not amended yet, though.
I know.
Okay.
The town, the community corrected me.
Got it.
So, okay, we're going to start again. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $1,728,744 for the purposes listed below, or listed that I will read, to authorize and to authorize funding these amounts by withdrawal from the listed capital reserve funds in the following amounts. Building maintenance and improvement capital reserve funds, HVAC controls, for HVAC controls in the police department, $30,000. Dispatch equipment and dispatch center enhancements capital reserve fund, Hayes Hill Radio Building, $70,000. Fire department vehicle and equipment capital reserve fund, fire car, one replacement, overhead doors in Aetna Fire Station, $101,668. Highway construction and maintenance equipment capital reserve fund, truck 11 replacement, which is the 10-wheeler with plow, backhoe loader truck replace, and truck 1 replacement, or $528... Municipal Transportation Improvement Fund, Maple Street Sidewalk Gap, $44,500. Parking operation vehicles and parking facility improvements, $77,400. Whoops. Parking operation vehicles and parking facility improvements capital reserve fund for the stairwell maintenance, $77,400. Police vehicles and equipment capital reserve fund, safety rescue equipment, $67,500. Road construction and improvement capital reserve fund, Lebanon Summer Street video detection system at $28,000. Sewer equipment and facilities improvements capital reserve fund, the backhoe loader for line maintenance, 50%, $80,000. Water treatment and distribution equipment and system capital reserve fund, backhoe loader for water treatment, 50%. Balch Hill water storage tank painting and Greensboro Road, Greensboro booster pumps at $706,500. This will be a non-lapsing appropriation per RSA 32:7, Roman numeral 6. It will not lapse until these specified purchases are complete or June 30, 2030, whichever occurs sooner.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second on this motion for Article 11? Thank you, I have a second. So as prefaced by Mr. Callahan, Joanna is also going to offer an amendment to this article.
Okay. I offer an amendment to the posted warrant to eliminate the $44,500 withdrawal from Municipal Transportation Improvement Fund. The new amended total for Article 11 is $1,684,244.
Okay, do I have a second? Yes, I have a second here in front. Now, this one seems less complicated to me, is that correct, Joanna?
It is.
Okay, so basically, $44,500 were in the noticed warrant article that shouldn't have been, and they're being taken out by this amendment? Any other context you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. On the motion to amend, does anybody have comment, question, concerns, observations? Yes, madam. Can you stand up, please, and identify yourself, if you don't mind? Thanks.
I was just wondering if this means we're no longer doing this Maple Street Sidewalk Gap project?
Very good question.
Good question. I mean, I, you guys?
The Maple Street Sidewalk project will be delayed by one year, and we'll go through appropriations next year to include the funding.
Further questions, concerns on the motion to amend? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to amend, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The amendment passes. Any further comment or question on Article 11 as amended? Hearing none, all in favor of Article 11, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Article 11 passes. To introduce Article 12, Ms. Chamberlain.
Article 12, to see if the town will vote to discontinue the Bridge Capital Reserve Fund, established under RSA 35-1, for the purpose of funding bridge maintenance and improvements, and to transfer all remaining funds to the general fund's undesignedated fund balance.
So moved, do I have a second? Thank you, I have a second here in front. Any comments, questions, concerns, Article 12? Hearing none? Yes, is there one? Yes, madam.
Yes.
Yes, the question, the request was that the article be explained a little more fully.
So we had a Bridge Capital Reserve Fund, and we basically did a bunch of bridge repairs, and the thinking is, in the future, we'll be bonding that work. So right now, we have some funds set aside in this Bridge Capital Reserve Fund that we would like to put into a fund with other funds, so it's more usable. That is a good question. Rob?
The question is, how much on the...
213,447. $214,277.
Mr. Canooty?
Yeah.
Do you mind coming to, it's really hard to hear people, even if you think...
Okay. Do I have a second? Yes, I have a second here in front. Now, this one seems less complicated to me. Is that correct, Joanna? Okay.
It is.
So, basically, $44,500 were in the noticed warrant article that shouldn't have been, and they're being taken out by this amendment? Any other context you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. On the motion to amend, does anybody have comment, question, concerns, observations? Yes, madam. Can you stand up, please, and identify yourself if you don't mind? Thanks.
I was just wondering if this means we're no longer doing this Maple Street Sidewalk Gap project?
Very good question.
Good question. I mean, I, you guys?
The Maple Street Sidewalk project will be delayed by one year, and we'll go through appropriations next year to include the funding.
Further questions, concerns on the motion to amend? Seeing none. All in favor of the motion to amend say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The amendment passes. Any further comment or question on Article 11 as amended? Hearing none. All in favor of Article 11 say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Article 11 passes. To introduce Article 12, Ms. Chamberlain.
Hi. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to discontinue the Bridge Capital Reserve Fund, established under RSA 35-1, for the purpose of funding bridge maintenance and improvements, and to transfer all remaining funds to the general fund's undesignated fund balance.
So moved. Do I have a second? Thank you. I have a second here in front. Any comments, questions, concerns, Article 12? Hearing none. Yes? Is there one? Yes, madam. Yes. The question, the request was that the article be explained a little more fully.
So, we had a bridge capital reserve fund, and we basically did a bunch of bridge repairs, and the thinking is, in the future, we'll be bonding that work. So, right now, we have some funds set aside in this bridge capital reserve fund that we would like to put into a fund with other funds, so it's more usable. That is a good question. Rob?
The question is how much on the?
Two hundred and thirteen, four hundred and forty-seven dollars. Two hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Mr. Canooty?
Yeah.
Do you mind coming to, it's really hard to hear people, even if you think your voice is bold.
So, this is a fund that was approved by the state, and the town appropriated, voted to appropriate money for, through taxation dollars, for the express purpose of maintaining bridges. And now you want to take that money out and use it for something else?
Yeah. We want to put it in a fund for roads and bridges, and the public right-of-way.
And other things?
Well, it will-
Just for a general fund, which can be used for other-
Right. We have to, we have to move it, sorry, I didn't finish the whole thing. We have to move it into the general fund, close that fund, and then move it into a new fund. And so now, we'll have access to repair roads, bridges, public right-of-way.
But then you'll be using bond money to repair bridges in the future, which will require interest on the bonds.
Right, but we are, we don't have that project right now, so that money would be sort of sitting there, not accessible.
It seems like we could keep it until we need it for the bridges, because we do bridge maintenance almost every year.
We will be able to do bridge maintenance with it, with the new fund. It will just be adding a little bit of flexibility in how we fund our ongoing infrastructure needs.
Actually, it's a lot of flexibility, because you can use none of it for bridges, if we vote to approve that, right?
Theoretically, yeah.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
Jeff, hold on, Jeff. Rob, do you want to respond to the comment?
I wanted to clarify. The Select Board actually moved the amount, you know, in a future warrant article, into the Capital Buildings Reserve Fund, a new fund, to address our, our capital buildings needs. The reason why we're making this proposed amendment is that the work we do on bridges triggers a bond most of the time, and we're consolidating the capital reserve funds to have one for roads and bridges, in a way that is more responsive to what we currently do. So, the two-part is, to close this, we have to move the money to the undesignated fund balance. A subsequent warrant article will move it into a new capital reserve fund if approved.
So, in theory, if I understand correctly, Rob, next year, we would have a warrant article that affects that subsequent?
You have it in this account, in the-
Oh, it's in this art, okay, great. And which, which article is that, Rob?
Article 14.
Okay. So, as I understand it, the money that will be coming out of the Bridge and Capital Reserve Fund and going into the general fund would then be put into another capital reserve fund. Is that correct?
Correct.
For Article 15? Okay. Thank you. Jeff?
Just, could you clarify, Rob, what capital reserve fund it goes into? Because I thought I heard you say like a general buildings fund, but we also have a roads fund. So, does it go specifically into the roads fund, or does it go into a buildings capital fund?
The, the total amount goes into the undesignated fund balance.
Right now, I know, if we prove-
And then, the amount equal to what we're moving into the undesignated fund balance will go, is proposed to go in Article 14, to the Building, Maintenance, and Improvements Capital Reserve Fund, which is a new fund.
Okay. But we, I, I think I understand correctly. We also have a roads capital fund?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Is it not possible to move the money directly from one capital fund to the other?
It is not. We're required by the state to take these options.
Could I, could I offer an amendment?
Sure.
I would ask that we amend this to take the $215,000, and instead of putting it into the undesignated fund, where we already have over $5 million, I would ask that we apply that to the budget amount and reduce the amount that needs to be raised by taxes, fund this year's budget by that amount of money. And I could write that somehow if you need me to.
I, I think, it does need to be in writing. So, if there's a way to formulate that, Rob can type it out, and then we can have a, a vote on the motion. Can you get the text up there? I'll give you some time to think this over, Jeff.
So, you ready?
I'll do my best.
So, the amendment would close the, could close the bridge fund, but move the remaining 215 thou, leave that amount out. Move the remaining balance to be applied to this year's amount that will need to be raised by taxes to cover this year's budget.
I'm not sure I can do this.
All right. I withdraw. Forget it.
No, no, Jeff. I'm sorry, we-
I don't want to be here all night. Thought it was simple. Like, we've got $215,000.
I know.
We've got $5 million. We're going to take $5 million, and we're going to take another $200,000. We're going to put it over here, and then we'll have 5.2 million. And then we'll move it over here, where we'll still have a bunch of money that we just keep accumulating. And then, you're telling me that later, to Kevin's point, we're going to borrow money. You've already borrowed all this money from the taxpayers, right? And now, later, we're going to borrow money and pay interest to fix bridges, while we've got that money sitting over there that you've already borrowed from us. It's nuts. So, if we can write it, I'd like, I, that's what I think should happen. So, that's why I'm here.
So, so, I'll do my best. It says, I think, everything can stay in up to transfer all remaining funds to, right?
Correct.
And instead of to the general fund, undesignated fund balance, what would you like it to say?
So, I don't know the exact language, but what I would like it to do is offset the amount of money we need to raise this year in the budget we're about to vote on later tonight, to reduce the amount of money we need to raise this year in property taxes to fund this year's budget. I don't know the exact language to say that.
So, it may be, I'm just venturing a thought here, it may be that the amendment would need to come to the general budget.
Okay.
As if this goes to the general fund, then you could, you could request an amendment to the budget article to reduce by that amount. Does that make sense?
Yep. We'll do it that way.
Okay. Kari?
I withdraw my amendment.
Thank you.
So, Kari Asmus, and yes, that would be the correct place to do the amendment, but I think that there have been a number of assumptions in this discussion. You may remember three, four years ago that we did a bond for bridges, and we have fixed every single bridge in the town, and they each have a life span of 50 to 75 years. So, we do not expect to be bonding for bridges anytime at all soon, which is why it made so much sense to change this, to close this fund that is only for bridges, and to put it together with the roads. Roads and bridges kind of go together, and that as the town sees a need to maybe put more money towards bridges, that they can do that in the future. But there's no immediate plans to do that. On the other hand, you will see during the, so there's amending the, the final budget article, but you will see, whichever article it is, for the capital, what is it called? Capital Facilities Fund that we are going to be setting up, there's an amount, an amount in there to put in, $1.7 million. And the point seven is 200,000 from this bridge fund. And the reason why the Select Board decided that they wanted to put the money there is because we have a lot of capital needs. In particular, the needs for the Howe Library, over the next three, four years, are $2 million. And right now, we have not put one penny into any of these capital reserve funds for that $2 million of needs for the Howe Library. So, this $200,000, you can say, yeah, we want to lower our taxes by that amount, and you will not feel it at all. You're, you're, you know, it's, it's not that big of an amount. But it will mean that there will need to be higher taxation when we get around to fixing the Howe Library over the next one year, three years, and four years, are when those things are planned. So, just looking forward, I think that the Select Board has really put all of these pieces together, looking back three years and looking forward four years. And I, I can tell you, I will not be voting for any amendments to these, because I think it's extremely thought, well thought out, however complex. But that's, that's the town's reality right now.
And Kari, can you just explain that you, your role here?
Okay. So, for nine years, I was the chair of, well, six years as chair of the Hanover Finance Committee, and so I've been following this very closely. I stepped down a year ago, but as trustee of the trust funds, I pay very close attention to all of these funds and how things are being moved around. So, although I didn't pay quite as, the same amount of attention to the budget this year, as a trustee of the trust funds, this is something that I need to oversee, and why I've been paying attention to it.
Okay. Do I understand correctly, from what you've said and what has been explained here, that the, the idea is that this money would be going from the Bridge Capital Reserve Fund to a Facilities Capital Reserve Fund?
Right, because that-
Could be used for bridges, but might not be used for bridges?
Well, the capital, the, the warrant article says exactly what the purpose of that new fund will be, and I don't know who is reading that, but it, it talks about everything from design to repair to maintenance, because it's just, building facilities is something that we have not saved sufficiently for. Whereas, right now, we don't need more money for bridges. We have reserved sufficiently for roads. But again, the, the real need is buildings.
Thank you. Doctor?
The wording of this is municipal buildings and facilities, whereas you're taking money from what had been the bridge fund. So, does facilities include roads and bridges?
No.
It does not.
No. We have a separate capital reserve fund for roads and bridges, which will be discussed in Article 13.
We're on 13.
Yeah, we're, we're not on 13 yet. He just mentioned that it will be discussed in, in Article 14.
We're on, we're on 12.
Okay.
13 and 14 are the-
But if I understand correctly, the question arises because you had said earlier, Rob, that Article 14 then transfers this money from the general fund into another capital reserve fund.
Yes.
Which is true, but it apparently isn't a capital reserve fund dedicated to roads.
Correct.
Is that right? Okay. So, there's your, your answer.
Okay. That doesn't quite seem right.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I asked this specifically, and when I was talking about this going into a general fund that could be used for other purposes, Alice was shaking his head no that I was misunderstanding that. Then you responded that it wouldn't be used for anything besides roads and bridges. This specifically says buildings, and then Kari was talking about the Howe Library. As a civil engineer who's done bridge inspections for over 30 years, I, I think it's silly to think that we're not going to need to do something to bridges for the next 30 to 50 years, or something like that. It's just extremely unlikely.
Thank you. Jenny?
First of all, I'm, I apologize for, for basically, the idea is that we look at 12, 13, and 14 together. We close this bridge fund because we don't have any current foreseeable needs for the bridge fund, but we do acknowledge that we may need bridge maintenance. So, part of the idea is to rename the Road Improvement Fund to include bridges. But the money I misspoke is meant to go into this Facilities Fund, where we have these very pressing needs that we know we have right now, and we haven't saved for. So, that is the overall plan that connects these three warrant articles.
So, Rob said when we do bridges, we always have bonds to do the bridges anyway, because we don't have enough money in the warrant articles to pay for the bridges through taxation. So, now we're saying that even though we do that, we have extra taxation money that we didn't spend, but we got bonds to get this. It doesn't make a lot of sense. It seems to be a lot of disconnects here, and it's not very clear, and doesn't seem to be very well thought out.
Go ahead, Carrie.
Let me just offer a comment. Can I just offer a comment?
Not working.
There it is.
Here we go. Thank you. Quick comment. The, the money that's sitting in the bridge fund is not, not slated for use. So, rather than just letting it sit there when we have competing demands for capital, we've said, you know what? Let's not raise more money when we have money that we could use. So, it actually, this is taking advantage of money that's been set aside, not being used. So, it actually, all else being equal, reduces the demand for more taxation. Yes, ma'am.
Kesa Noda. I appreciated the comments earlier made. It seems really clear to me. I trust that if people looked at the bridges, and the repairs have all been done, and all the bridges have been covered, and as far as we know, there will not be need for many years. But the Howe Library needs work, and there is no funding for that, or not enough. It's, it seems pretty obvious to me, move the money if we care about Howe Library and other buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Acker?
Sorry. Just a counterpoint to that and the Howe Library issue. The problem with doing that is then we avoid the difficult discussion of what we want to do with the Howe Library, and how much money we want to spend on it, and what that should look like. Because when the conversation about the Howe Library comes up next year, or the year after, or whenever, we'll simply say, well, we have this money saved, we appropriated it three years ago. Nobody will remember Kevin and me by then, and the money will just get spent. If we need $2 million for the Howe Library, we should have a warrant article when the time comes, well thought out, vetted, planned, to spend whatever money we decide we should spend on the Howe Library. In the meantime, I think we should give the money back to the people who gave it up in the first place. We have $27 million in the bank. We have a $5 million slush fund. We're going to vote later tonight on another $100,000 contingency fund. Carrie, I know you said we wouldn't notice it, but you don't notice it one drop at a time, till all of a sudden, one day, you wake up, and your taxes have doubled in 10 years. That's how you get there, is you say, oh, it's only 200,000. It's only 100,000. It's only 25,000. If we have to have money to redo the Howe Library, the way this is supposed to work is we're supposed to have a community conversation about what the Howe Library needs, what it should look like, how much it will cost, how much we can afford. We could have a gold-plated Howe Library, a platinum-plated Howe Library, a silver-plated Howe Library. We can decide. But we should have that conversation in the context of a conversation about the Howe Library, not have it be skewed by the fact that that future Select Board can say, well, we have this money already, and we designated it a couple of years ago, so we're, now we're going to spend it. I just think that the money for the bridges was appropriated for bridges. If we don't need it for bridges anymore, you should give it back to us. And then, if you need money for the Howe Library, you should come ask us for it, and we'll decide whether we think that's a good proposal or not. My guess is, we're going to say yes when you come ask for 2 million bucks for the Howe Library, because we always say yes. So, you'll get the Howe Library fixed, but in the meantime, just give us the 285 grand back. It seems simple to me, and maybe other people see it differently. But thank you.
Janice?
Yep, Janice Starkey. My understanding is that if there were any spending on any buildings, it would probably come up in the budget, and we will be voting on this next year as an appropriation of funds. So, I think, to your point, Jeff, we will be voting on it next year for the Howe or any other building that needs. So, hopefully, that concern will be clear next year. But I would call to question at this point.
We have a second. The motion on the floor is to call the question. We need two-thirds. You have a motion and a second. We need a two-thirds majority. So, to call the question. The question, the motion is to call the question, which would be approval of the article. But first, we need to move, you need to grant the motion to call the question. Two-thirds. Two-thirds to call the question. Yep. It's not two-thirds on the merits. It's two-thirds to call the question. So, the motion is to call the question. All in favor of the motion to call the question say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Okay. The motion passes to call the question. So, Article 12 is now before the body. All in- So Article 12 is now before the body. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes carry it, although I definitely heard the nays. Article 12 passes. I can figure that out. Article 13, Jenny Chamberlain, please.
Article 13. To see if the town will vote to change the purpose of the Road Construction and Improvement Capital Reserve Fund, established under RSA 351, to include both road and bridge maintenance, repair, and reconstruction, to rename it the Road Rideaway and Bridge Construction and Improvement Capital Reserve Fund, and furthermore, to name the select board as agents to expend from said fund.
Thank you. Do I have a second on Article 13? I have a second on Article 13. As discussed, there's a technical amendment to be offered, Jenny.
So I offer an amendment to the posted warrant article, striking the final sentence, which reads, "And furthermore, to name the selectmen as agents to expend from said fund."
So under the proposed motion, first of all, do I have a second? Thank you. There is a second on the motion to amend. So under the proposed amendment, the last sentence of Article 13 would be struck, and the rest would be preserved. Does everyone understand? Okay. Anybody have questions on the motion to amend? Bernie?
Just to clarify my understanding, if the selectmen are not aimed as, not named as agents, it would take a town meeting vote to withdraw from that fund?
Correct.
That's correct.
Further questions, concerns, observations on Article 13 as amended? I'm sorry, on the amended, proposed amendment to Article 13. Yes, Nancy?
This is just an information question. Why, after several years that we've been called the select board, is there a typo that says "select men"?
That's a, the question was why after?
I understand we're striking it. I understand we're striking it. It's a point of information.
Yep. So the question was why after many years of calling the select board the select board, is it listed as "select men" in this question? And Joanna clarified that that's one of the reasons why they're striking it. Further questions or concerns on the proposed amendment to Article 13? Hearing none. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries, so the article is amended to strike and furthermore to name selectmen as agents to expend from said fund. So back to the amended Article 13, which does not include that last sentence. Any thoughts, questions, or concerns on Article 13?
If I can offer some explanation, we covered this a little bit. But this is to deal sort of holistically with our transportation needs so that we can look at our future capital improvements of our roads, bridges, and the public right-of-way together, as is our practice, and they can, those funds can come from the same capital reserve fund. It also aligns with eligibility for certain grants federally.
Any further thoughts, questions, or concerns, ma'am?
So why not put that 200,000 from the bridge into this?
Yeah, that's a really good question.
Why don't we just amend it to put that money in here, then we won't have to have any question about it used for library or whatever?
And we had a really good discussion about this at the select board meeting, where that was our original plan. And then we started thinking about what are our really pressing capital needs, and a couple of things surfaced. One is the Howe Library had done a facilities study that showed that the building envelope is in dire need of repair. Another is a retaining wall, again, outside of the Howe Library, needs to be replaced. And then on top of that, we started to do a comprehensive facilities analysis of all of the town buildings, and many of them are in need of repair. And these are repairs and maintenance that we have not saved for. So it seemed the best use of this capital would be to invest it in our buildings, which we know we have big expenses coming up. So rather than tie it up where we don't know that we have imminent projects, we decided that it would be best to go to this Facilities Fund. And then, of course, next year, when we appropriate these funds, we'll have a very clear reason, very clear facilities analysis. What would these funds be used for, which buildings they would go to, you know, whether or not we're upgrading Town Hall versus whether we're upgrading the dispatch, or we just did dispatch, but some other facilities over in Fire and Police, or the other nine buildings I think we have? Yeah.
And I understand from Mr. Wa's comment and answer that that would necessarily be by warrant article. Is that correct?
Correct. To remove the, to appropriate the money from the capital reserve fund as established for this facilities purpose would be on the warrant.
So you had asked a question. Are you proposing an amendment also, or a point of clarification? Okay, thank you. Any further comments or questions on Article 13 as amended? Okay. Yes?
Please ask people, could you please ask people who stand up to speak what their names are and where they live? Because I can't see them, and I don't know who's talking. You seem to know, but I don't. Thank you.
Thank you for that excellent point. So if you are asked to speak or you wish to speak at the town meeting, please definitely announce yourself to the body. I apologize. Okay, so Article 13 as amended is now on the table. Any further comments or questions? Okay. All in favor of Article 13 as amended, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Two-thirds vote obtained. And I want to note, the reason we needed two-thirds vote under that particular article, Article 13, is that there is a statute, RSA 3516, which requires a two-thirds vote to amend the purpose of one of our trust funds. And so that is why we needed that majority. Article 14, Jenny Chamberlain. Actually, before we start on that, I have some election results. Can I announce those, and then we'll get into Article 14?
Sure.
Thank you. With respect to the elections that took place today for various different elected offices and Article zoning amendments to the town zoning ordinance, the following results were turned in. There were a total of 1,296 ballots that were received today from all the voters in town. For select board, for a period of three term, a three-year term, Evan Leonard Gerson obtained 259 votes, and Athos John Rossius obtained 916 votes, and there were five write-ins. For town clerk, Tracy Walsh, obtained 1,086 votes, and there were 13 write-ins. Congratulations, Tracy. For supervisor of the checklist, Marcia Kelly, obtained 1,064 votes, and there were 10 write-ins. Congratulations, Marcia Kelly. For trustee of the trust funds, Elizabeth Betsy McLean, obtained 1,078 votes, and there were seven write-ins. Congratulations, Betsy. For trustee of the Etna Town Library, Sherry Baker, obtained 1,057 votes, and there were 10 write-ins. Congratulations, Sherry. For trustee of the cemetery, Jennifer Ross Taxman, received 1,056 votes, and there were 10 write-ins. Congratulations, Jennifer. On zoning Article 2, yes voted 703, no voted 575. So Article 2 passes. Article 3, zoning amendment Article 3, yes voted 748, no voted 525. Article 3 passes. Article 4, yes voted 971, no voted 294. Article 4 passes. Thank you. Turning to Article 14. Ms. Chamberlain.
Right. Article 14. To see if the town will vote to change the purpose of the existing Building Maintenance and Improvement Capital Reserve Fund, established under provision of RSA 351, to expand the purpose to include the planning, design, construction, repair, improvement, and/or replacement of municipal buildings and facilities, and to rename it the Capital Facilities Capital Reserve Fund. And furthermore, to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,713,447 to be placed in said fund with said amount to come from the town's undesignated fund balance.
This is another article where we're changing the purpose of one of our trust funds, and so it does require a two-thirds majority. With respect to Article 14, do I have a second? Yes, I see a second up here. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, concerns, context, observations?
To offer a little context, I mean, we've talked about this a little now. But this is to make sure that the fund reflects more than sort of routine maintenance and repairs and includes capital improvements, because it was not 100% clear.
Thank you. Any other questions? This obviously dovetails with some of the other things we've discussed tonight. Thoughts, concerns, observations? Hearing none. I'll call the question. With respect to the motion on Article 14, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Article 14 passes. Article 15, Mr. Burke.
Article 15. To see if the town will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the select board and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 3288, on March 10, 2025, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing levels. Year 2026, estimated increase $125,859, an increase of $54,400. 2027, $138,250. And to further raise and appropriate the sum of $125,859 for the 2026 fiscal year, such sum representing additional costs attributed to the increase in the salaries and benefits required by the proposed agreement over those that would be paid to the, at the current staffing levels in accordance with the most recent collective bargaining agreement, with said funds to come from the FIRE fund.
Thank you. Do I have a second on Article 15, please? Thank you. I have a second here up front. Context for this, Mr. Burke?
The only context I'll add is that when we approved the collective bargaining agreements last year, which included each of the different unions, there was an opener in the fire department's contract. This brings the fire department in line with all other unions in terms of salaries and benefits. And my mustache is just in solidarity with the firefighters, so.
Any further comments, questions, concerns, observations about Article 15? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Article 15 passes. Article 16, Mr. Burke.
So we skipped.
Actually, can I, I want to mention one thing that I forgot. I want to note that the voting on Article 6, which was the ballot measure that we did earlier, has closed. So they're in the process of counting that now. Thank you. Go ahead, Jared.
Do we need 16? Because this is only if the preceding article was defeated.
Oh, I see, yes. I mean, we have to vote? It's conditional. It's conditional, yeah, it is. Okay, so. Article 16 has been voided by the action of the body with respect to Article 15. Off the hook. Okay. Article 17, Mr. Rossius, Dr. Rossius.
I move that the town vote, oh, excuse me, I move that the town, per RSA 31:98A, vote to raise and appropriate $100,000 into the town's annual contingency fund for fiscal year 2026. This sum to come from the undesignated fund balance.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Thank you. I have a second. Maybe an explainer, and then I'll open it up for comment.
Thank you. Yes, the contingent, the annual, the town's annual contingency fund is something that we first funded last year. We, last year, we put in $25,000 as a first step in this endeavor. The RSA specifies that municipalities can appropriate up to 1% of the annual budget, which for us is more than, well, would be more than $320,000. This $100,000 is a modest amount of money that we are taking from the undesignated fund balance, moving to this fund to allow flexibility to respond to critical needs that may arise during the year without having to call a special town meeting.
Thank you. Comments, thoughts, questions, concerns? Mr. Acker? Do you mind announcing yourself when you come down and stating your address, please?
Hi, Jeff Acker, 27 Greensboro Road. Dr. Rossius, just a point of clarification. I think you just said the 100,000 comes from the undesignated fund balance. But actually, we're appropriating that 100,000, so it comes from this year's taxes, right?
I'll need help on that, Rob.
As you'll see in Article 17, it says this sum is to come from the undesignated fund balance.
Okay.
So it is not part of the taxation?
Right, okay. So that's different than we did last year.
It is different, Jeff, and I, you know, I was reading, I'm sorry, I'm taking your.
No, that's okay.
I noticed you spoke about this last year as well, and I wanted to be pretty clear on that.
Yeah, great. I appreciate that. I'm wondering if anybody could tell me if any of last year's 25,000 was actually spent? And also, what happens to this money at the end of a budget cycle if it doesn't get spent?
To my knowledge.
None of the $25,000 has been spent.
And it reverts back to the undesignated fund balance if it, if this 100,000 is not spent.
Okay, thanks.
Further thoughts, questions, concerns about Article 17? Hearing none. I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Article 17 passes. Article 18, Mr. Callahan. Do you want the floor?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Let me first read the article. Article 18. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $32,870,441 to pay the operating expenses of the town for the 2026 fiscal year for the purposes set forth in the town budget. This sum does not include the funds voted on any of the preceding or succeeding articles. I will now move.
It's moved. Could you ask for a second?
All right, that constitutes a movement. Is there a second? I think there's a second, yes.
There was a second.
There was a second, yes, okay. Thank you. So what I would like to do, and I've been cautioned to read the room, I recognize we've been here for a little while. And if you guys need a seventh inning stretch, you want to stand up. I'm going to need about 15 minutes of your time, but we're talking about a budget of $39.6 million. I think it warrants 15 minutes of your time, but if you want to stand up and stretch, I get it. I, we have cushions here. You guys don't. Feel free. I, in the interest of extra. I, in the interest of exercise, I will suggest that no discussion of the budget in Hanover would be complete without acknowledging that we live in a special place, and I don't mean like a precious place, special in the sense that we have fantastic volunteers, and before we all leave, and our election workers leave, I'd like you to join me in giving them a huge round of applause. Thank you. Thank you to all of our election workers, and thank you to all the volunteers who do so much for this town. It makes an enormous difference. What I'd like to do, and I guess I have a clicker here, I'm going to try and get through this briskly, but first, I, we're going to tie out warrant Article Number Eighteen versus the budget, because there are two different numbers, which might prompt a question why. We'll go through an overview of the budget, we'll deep, we'll do a deep dive on the biggest fund, which is the general fund. We'll talk about your tax bill, we'll talk about it in context, weaving in school, county. We'll talk about increases per home impact, we'll do a little summary, we'll give you a little bit of context about what the Select Board has been doing, and we'll even give you a little preview of what we expect in the following, following year. So warrant Article verse, Eighteen versus the budget, I read it, I'm not going to read it again, it is not the budget amount that we are going to talk about because of the other warrant articles to just, ah, can we focus then? Can you see that? No. It looks like it's double printed, but you are voting on thirty-two million, eight hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars. I'm sorry, you can't read it. The budget, and you're going to find this on page sixty-four of your ant, town report, is thirty-nine million, six hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight. Let's see. Rob, can you advance it? My clicker's not working. No? Oh, hang on. Here we go. We did take forty-four thousand, five hundred out of the Article Eleven, but again, the operating, the number you're voting on is unchanged. Okay, here is page sixty-four. I recognize it's not easy to read from where you're sitting, you may want to follow along from the book, but, so although we're voting on the budget in pieces, it's really easiest to look at this in aggregate. You'll see that here. There are six funds that the town uses as funding mechanisms. The general fund and the FIRE fund are supported by property taxes. The parking fund, the water fund, the sewer fund, and the ambulance fund are supported by user fees. This is an interesting table, because less than half of revenues for the town are coming from property taxes. That's about seventeen point five million dollars in aggregate. Fees contribute over fourteen million, and this year, a relatively high three point four million is coming in from use of undesignated fund balance, as we've discussed earlier. Basically, these are unspent funds accrued during the year or carried over from prior years. Across all these funds, fifty-four percent is for personnel, twenty-five percent is for other operating costs, twenty-one percent is a combination of capital items, debt service, and other. I'm going to switch to a pie chart, so you get a sense of scale, but the general fund is twenty-three point seven million dollars in round numbers. The FIRE fund, four point seven million, parking, two point five, water, three point three, sewer, four point one, and the ambulance fund, about one point four million. The general fund covers all departments not separately identified, so think public works, think police, library, but also administrative departments such as town manager's office, planning, zoning, and codes, finance, IT, HR, assessing, town clerk functions, and really, most of the helpful people that you encounter in town hall, although town hall also has parking, but they're helpful too. So, okay, all right. So key budget drivers. So this year, we took a zero-based budget approach. That helped us to really focus on priorities and eliminate unnecessary costs. Thank you, Ellen and Rob, for leading that process, and to all the department heads who embraced it. We had a very large, as discussed, five point two million dollar undesignated fund balance in the general fund, almost half of which we are directing to capital accounts based on known and identifiable near-term capital needs. Even though we had a fourteen percent increase in healthcare insurance costs, salary and benefits were held to just a three percent increase, which is remarkable, owing to changes in personnel and no net additions to staffing levels in this budget. The tailwinds were factored into the budget, higher revenues from motor vehicle registration fees, and also project-related fees. We contained expenses, very modest salary and wage growth in the general fund and FIRE. We had flattish road, road maintenance and utility spending, and again, the use of undesignated fund balance, and our headwinds, as we'll discuss, are really capital. We're going to come back to this idea of capital. Let's turn to our largest fund, the general fund. You'll see here, salary and benefits, over fifteen million, that's sixty-four percent. Operating costs are nineteen percent, capital, three point five million, that's fifteen percent. Where does the money come from? Well, taxes aren't the whole of the equation. You can see here that we get money from the state of New Hampshire. This is really meals and rooms tax. Short-term interest is six hundred thousand dollars. Fees in the general fund, four point six million. Undesignated fund balance, a big number this year, two point six million dollars, and capital reserve funds, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, some other miscellaneous revenues. That leaves the tax levy, which is coming from property taxes for the general fund, this is your municipal property tax, is fifty-six percent, it's thirteen point two million dollars in round numbers. I want to talk about your tax bill. What does this look like when it, when it ends up in the envelope that comes to you in the mail? Well, the municipal portion of your aggregate tax bill, not just for the town, looks to be about twenty-four percent of the total. The FIRE District Number One, if you live in FIRE District Number One, would be about eight percent, and I'll go through the specific numbers, and state and local education aggregate to around sixty-one percent. Okay, that's a little fuzzy too. Rob, anything we can do to sharpen that up? I'll, I'll read you the numbers. So your tax bill for, this is for tax year two thousand and twenty-five, would aggregate to about nineteen dollars and ninety-six cents. You can kind of see that, sorry, that's fuzzy. That is per one thousand dollars of assessed value, so just under two percent. The municipal piece of that is four seventy-seven, the FIRE District piece, a dollar sixty-one. Those are the twenty-four and eight percent. A couple, a couple of caveats here, the county tax rate assumes a three point five percent increase. We don't actually know the number, they haven't given it to us, that's, that's just a placeholder. The school tax rates are as provided from the school district, and the school and county tax rates are not overseen by the Select Board, but tax bills are collected by the town on their behalf. Let's take a look, I think this is a little easier to read, but this is the projected two thousand and twenty-five, again, tax bill, nineteen ninety-six, showing the municipal and FIRE pieces in blue. Those represent year-over-year increases for the municipal tax rate of two point nine percent, and for FIRE District Number One of one point three percent. And across all entities, and again, with the caveats with respect to county and schools, that's an anticipated three point six percent increase. What does that mean per home? So this shows the same taxes we showed you against the value of a hypothetical home in Hanover. By the way, good luck finding a hypothetical home in Hanover, because what we show here are the median assessed value of a single-family residence at six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and a look at a recent Realtor.com median of homes available for sale in Hanover, which was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So taking the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar example, the municipal increase in taxes to support the budget discussed here tonight would be an incremental one hundred dollars and fifty cents, and the increase to FIRE District One residents would be fifteen dollars. So I just have a couple more slides. The budget this year benefited really from careful resource stewardship by departments and a favorable, some favorable revenue trends that I mentioned. This was a thoughtful and disciplined budget approach, using this zero-based technique. The tax increase is modest, the municipal increase of two point nine percent is less than inflation, FIRE District One increase is only one point three percent. The per-home impact, as mentioned, for a hypothetical seven hundred and fifty thousand is a hundred dollars and fifteen dollars for FIRE District One. I'll also tell you that based on Ellen's look at how we're tracking this year, that the revenues and expenses are both coming in better, in the sense that revenues are more and expenses are less. So it is anticipated that we will use less undesignated fund balance than was projected in the budget for the current fiscal year. Just quickly, you know, last year, this body asked some good questions about what you get for your tax dollars, and we've taken some steps to answer that question. Throughout the annual report, we have started to embed infographics, which detail department work performed and achievements. The Select Board adopted an objectives and key results approach, deliberately trimming our ambitions to focus on delivering and being accountable on our goals. The report of the Select Board that's in the annual report before you goes through the list in some detail, and we have been reviewing this at Select Board meetings as well. The four main goal areas centered on people, the governance process, fiscal improvements, and advancing the Hanover Sustainability Master Plan. I would say we made great progress against most of our specific deliverables, we missed on a few, and we, we will have a continuing focus on others that will always be fundamental to our activities. So one of the joys of Select Board service has been getting to better know our town staff through a series of department deep dives. We've been visiting facilities, and, you know, we are very fortunate to have the talents, the energy, the creativity, and the dedication of the workforce and leaders of the town of Hanover. So many, many thanks from the Select Board for all that you do, staff, and leadership. Yes. As we look to, to the future, you know, beyond fiscal year twenty-six, there are things that we know are out there that we can't quantify, tariffs. We don't know the impact of tariffs on both our operating budget and capital. We'll see, it's obviously, it's a moving target. We have known capital facility needs, we talked about the high, how library, that's an estimated four hundred and thirty-three thousand. We have to be further refined capital facility needs across a number of town facilities. That study is underway. We have a process now to consider capital through the Capital Improvement Program Committee. I know there's a lot of discussion here about capital. We actually have a pretty rigorous process in place, many thanks to all of those who lead that effort and who participate in it. Identified, but not, not yet endorsed by the Capital Improvement Committee, but out there as discussion items are some big capital projects. They include West Wheelock Corridor Infrastructure, South Main, which is, could be thirteen million, but that's a very ballpark-ish number, South Main Street Reconstruction, thirteen point eight million, I put a question mark next to it, Water Distribution, this is an ongoing project, that's eight million dollars, that would be funded through, through the water, not through the general fund. So these are big items that will be a subject of much discussion in the coming months, as we look out to future years. So putting it all together, and especially if you factor in potential cost shifts from the federal government or the state government down to the local level, what it spells is challenges ahead with cost shifts, with economic uncertainty, potentially with some large capital spending items which have been proposed but not approved. So these are things that the Select Board and you as voters should be thinking about, and there will be much committee work at the Capital Improvement Program Committee and other forums to discuss these issues. I know that was a lot, but I'd like to open it up to questions, please. And I think we probably also have comments from the, maybe from the Hanover Finance Committee at some point, whenever they might wish to do so. Yes?
Yes, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Jerry, yes, sorry. Not my role, okay, Jeremy. I thought you were doing a great job, Kerry. So, sir, kindly introduce yourself as well.
Greg Snyder, Two Tyler Road in Hanover, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Hanover Finance Committee as the Chair of the Committee. I won't take much time here, other than to say that our full statement of position on the budget is found on page sixty-one of the annual report. I'll just highlight a couple of things. Not only have we unanimously, as a committee, endorsed the approval of the budget, as Kerry has outlined, but last year, you may recall, that we had a number of concerns, not only about the budget process, but also financial control issues and transparency of the undesignated fund balance. I can tell you wholeheartedly that all of those concerns have been addressed. None of the concerns are highlighted in this report this year, because there's no need, and in fact, we are commending the administration on the fine progress and, and great work that they have done this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you from the Finance Committee in Hanover, and although nobody is retiring this year from the Finance Committee, if you are interested down the line in participating, it's an essential function in our town, and we always welcome a bank of resumes for people to think about for those positions. Any further thoughts, questions, concerns on Article Eighteen? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Oh, sir, I didn't see you.
I'm pretty short. Last year and years prior. Is that better?
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Bruce Franks, Gibson Road, Hanover. I'd like to understand, out of the goals that the city have, the town has for the future, how they expect to measure those, and that's been a ongoing concern I've had for all budgets, is the actual measuring process. I know what expenses are, and I understand what's been shared tonight, but that really doesn't answer the questions. Are we getting thirty-two, thirty-three million dollars worth of goods for the amount of money we're spending? Question mark. And I think going forward, we saw more data, more information about the planning process, but I'd like to see some results from the individual line items according to our needs and the direction of the town. Thank you.
Would you like any response on that, or is that a comment for the body?
I, no, last year, when I brought this subject up, the response was, we don't do that. And I'm not going to ask for a response tonight, because one year later, we still haven't had a good understanding of what our money's going for and the value of what we're spending on meeting the needs of the town. So, no, I'm just giving you the observation side of what you posed the question as.
Thank you. And as a point of order, we never completed the vote on that motion, although we did get half of it done, so we will be voting in, in the entirety on the, on the motion. Any further comments, questions, or concerns regarding Article Eighteen? Hearing none, I'm going to call the question. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Article Eighteen passes. Article Nineteen, Dr. Rossius.
Thank you. I move that the town modify the elderly property tax exemption under RSA seventy-two, colon, thirty-nine A as follows. To increase the exemption based on assessed value for qualified taxpayers to the following amounts. One hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for a person sixty-five years of age up to seventy-four years. Two hundred and five thousand dollars for a. amounts: $145,000 for persons 65 years of age up to 74 years, $205,000 for persons 75 years of age up to 79 years, and $285,000 for persons 80 years of age or older. To qualify, the individual must be at least 65 years of age, have been a New Hampshire resident for at least three consecutive years, own and occupy the real estate as their principal place of abode, either individually or jointly, or if the property is owned by the person's spouse, they must have been married for at least five consecutive years, have a net income not more than $46,000 if single, or $65,000 if married, and have net assets not in excess of $145,000, including the value of the residence. This article represents a proposed modification of the current exemption amounts of $96,000 ages 65 to 75, $144,000 age 75 to 80, and $198,000 age 80-plus, with current income limits of $36,800 single, and $51,000, excuse me, $51,700 married, and asset limits of $125,000. If approved, this article shall take effect April 1st, 2025, for the 2025 tax year.
So moved. Do I have a second? I see a second. Thank you. Thoughts, questions, concerns, context? Mr. Rossius? Dr. Rossius?
This article and the two subsequent ones are relatively similar, and what their intent of these articles, I'll speak to this one in particular, is to ensure that the qualifying seniors are kept financially whole after the townwide property reevaluation, and that it continues to, the exemption continues to offer some meaningful tax relief for these residents. And you'll see that 20 and 21, the two subsequent articles are somewhat similar.
Do you want me to move to consolidate?
No.
Okay. So the motion is on the floor. It has been seconded. Any further thoughts, questions, comments, or concerns on Article 19? Yes, sir.
Bill Hammond, Lebanonetta Road in Hanover. Just the last number that you meant was, or said was about 145,000 for the, including the value of the property, they can't have more than 145,000? Or did I misunderstand that?
I misspoke. Thank you for, I think I did say including. I meant excluding. Thank you.
Good clarification. Other thoughts, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Article 19, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion carries. Article 19 passes. Dr. Rossius, Article 20, please.
I move that the town modify the optional property tax exemption for the disabled as authorized by RSA 72:3, excuse me, 72:37B. If adopted, the exemption for qualified disabled taxpayers would increase from $198,000 to $285,000 based on the assessed value of the property. To qualify, the individual must have been a New Hampshire resident for at least five consecutive years, own and occupy the property as their principal place of abode, either individually or jointly, or if the property is owned by a spouse, they must have been married for at least five consecutive years, have a net income not exceeding $46,000 if single, or $65,000 if married, and own net assets not in excess of $145,000 excluding the value of the residence. This article represents a proposed modification to the current exemption of $198,000 in assessed value, with current income limits of $29,900 if single, and $40,200 if married, and asset limits of $125,000. If approved, this article shall take effect on April 1st, 2025, for the 2025 tax year.
Thank you. Do I have a second for Article 20 here in front, the second? Thank you. Any comments, further comments, questions, concerns? Article 20. Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of Article 20 say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion carries. Article 20 passes. Article 21, Dr.?
I move that the town modify the exemption for the blind under the provisions of RSA 72:37. If adopted, every inhabitant who is legally blind, as determined by the State of New Hampshire, shall be exempt each year from the excess value of their residence, residential real estate for property tax purposes in the amount of $50,000. This article represents a proposed modification of the current exemption amount of $35,000. If approved, this article shall take effect on April 1st, 2025, for the 2025 tax year.
So moved. Do I have a second? Thank you, I have a second here in front. Any thoughts, questions, concerns? Yes, Mr. Fischel, please announce yourself.
I'm Bill Fischel. I live on Two Reed Road, or what was Two Reed Road. It's being torn up right now. And these numbers are read every year, and I always wonder, how many people take these exemptions? These numbers seem quite low. Is, does anybody have a ballpark estimate of how many people are really, in my opinion, that poor that this would actually apply to them?
We do have the...
Just a question.
Ellen?
So the blind exemption is two. The elderly is seven, and I don't have an answer for the middle, number 20, but there's, it's a very small number.
Okay. Thanks.
Further questions, thoughts, concerns?
Jeremy?
Yes.
Am I on?
Yep.
Bill, these are State of New Hampshire RSA's that we are working with.
Thank you. Further context, questions, thoughts, or concerns? Okay, regarding Article 21. Did I second, do we second?
Yeah.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion carries. Article 21 passes. Article 22, this is a petition warrant article. Are any of the petitioners present to read it? If you don't mind identifying yourself, that'd be great.
I'm Susan Holcomb. I live at 35 Cummings Road, and this petition is exactly the same as a petition passed in at least 17 other towns in New Hampshire, and it comes at a time when New Hampshire is at a fiscal crisis, and as we just heard, we may see costs pass down from the state to the local towns. But the petition reads, "To see if the town will vote to reject any expansion of taxpayer funding for private education until we have full accountability, transparency, and a sustainable funding plan that ensures no further strain on public schools or local property taxpayers. Whereas taxpayers have a right to know how their money is spent and deserve a clear, verifiable evidence that it is being spent wisely and delivering results, and whereas taxpayer dollars are being diverted from public schools to private and religious education through education freedom accounts or vouchers, and this shift does not reduce public school expenses, leaving local taxpayers to cover the difference through higher property taxes. And whereas unlike public schools, private education funded by taxpayers through vouchers lack key accountability measures such as reporting how funds are used, tracking student performances, ensuring service for students with disabilities, conducting background checks for staff and adherence to minimum standards. Therefore, we the voters of Hanover, New Hampshire, call on our state-elected officials to uphold their duty to fiscal responsibility by rejecting any expansion of taxpayer funding for private education until we have full accountability, transparency, and a sustainable funding plan that ensures no further strain on public schools or local property taxpayers. We further direct the Town of Hanover Select Board to deliver this warrant article and the results in writing to New Hampshire's Governor and members of the state legislature within 30 days of this vote." And this was submitted by petition with signatures of 25 or more registered voters in the Town of Hanover. RSA 675-4.
Thank you. So moved. Do I have a second? I have a second here in front. Thank you. Would you like to offer any further comment or context to the article itself?
I'd be happy to respond to any questions. I think it's fairly obvious that the state is in a time of fiscal crisis, and this, there is presently a move to remove any income limits on those who are eligible for ESAs or vouchers, and that could increase state responsibility for expenditure by up to or over $100 million. That's not fiscally responsible, so I think we're just asking the state to think clearly about this and be fiscally responsible.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions, or concerns about Article 22? Ma'am?
Mary Hackett Phillips of 79 Lebanon Street here in Hanover. So I am one of your elected state representatives, and I'm speaking on this topic specifically because it has to do with my duties at the State House. I serve on Division Two of the Finance Committee, which is the primary body that oversees public education funding in our state. So this issue in particular comes up quite frequently at discussions, and most desperately during the most recent budget process. That is currently under the way, out of our hands of this House, but now in the Senate Chamber. This, I just want to let you know, folks, that this language has been approved in 18 towns across New Hampshire now, both in very progressive towns and deep-red districts as well. So that list is Andover, Bradford, Grantham, Mount Vernon, Newbury, Newport, New Boston, New London, Salisbury, Sunapee, Ware, Plainsfield, Rollinsford, Hollis, excuse me if I butcher this next one, Lynnborough.
Line, lined borough.
Lineborough, thank you. Penbrook, Springfield, Ware, and Wolfboro. On a personal note, this language, if approved by our town, it would be a tremendously powerful tool for me to have when I am fighting for proper public education funding at the state level, and I would be extremely proud of our town again stepping forward and being leaders in this issue across the state. So I'm just putting in my two cents that I think it would be really valuable, and I applaud the petitioners who brought this forward. I know that it's been a great effort across the state, and I appreciate the work that they did to bring it here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Ben Keeney, 18 Mulhern Farm Road. I am the current Dresden School Board Chair, which is responsible for the middle school and the high school, and was the previous Chair of the Hanover School Board, which covers the elementary school, Hanover Special Education, and Hanover Transportation. Thank you, Susan and Mary, for those comments, and I'm speaking only for myself tonight. But I do have some serious concerns about this proposal as written, and I've discussed it with our superintendent and principals earlier today, and they have similar concerns. And the issue is the wording that is said twice about rejecting any expansion of taxpayer funding for private education. And the concern is something called out-of-district placement, which means that for students that have severe disabilities, mental disabilities, learning disabilities, things like deafness, blindness, traumatic brain injury, the current, the school district actually pays private schools, both residential and day programs, to take care of students like that, and that the current count is roughly in the low two digits for Hanover students, and we budget about $1.2 million a year for that. So if you do that math, these are very high-need students. And as worded, I don't think we'd be allowed to expand funding for that. That funding can vary widely year on year. The state and federal laws require that towns provide a free and adequate education for all of our students, and I'd be curious particularly to Mary on how other towns have dealt with this concern.
And to be clear, you're not offering an amendment right now? You're making a comment?
What the wording has is, and I'd be, I'd be curious to see if someone could figure out the wording of how best to say that there's some sort of carve-out for special education or similar, but I have concerns about this as worded, although I have to perfectly hear the sentiment, I am not for vouchers or so-called education freedom accounts, but purely on the special education focus.
Thank you for the question, and I think this is the first time I've heard across the 18 towns that this issue's been brought up at the public forum vote, so I'm not capable of speaking on those 18 towns and their reactions to this specific question. I think it's worth considering a possible amendment to deal with this issue, if that's something that the body would like to consider.
I...
I guess you can't because it's a petition.
I just remembered, it's a petition warrant article, so it comes in as drafted, so it's an up or down vote on the petition warrant article.
My two cents to the concern is that, am I correct in understanding, Mr. Moderator, that this is a non-binding resolution?
That's my understanding. It directs the Town of Hanover to, what's binding would be directing the Town of Hanover Select Board to deliver this warrant article and the results in writing to New Hampshire's Governor and Select Board. But as to the remainder, it's advisory. Is that correct, Rob? Thank you.
If I may just make a final comment, that why I believe the concern is valid and definitely reasonable to bring forward at the time because this petition is more of a symbolic resolution instead of a binding legal obligation being created, that I would still encourage the town to get behind the original intent of the spirit of the resolution.
I would only add that, like you said, we're not allowed to edit this, which is what I would hope for, but I personally am not against, I agree with the intent and the concept, but just the wording of it could cause significant problems, even if it's not legally binding, and of course, if it's not legally binding, then why is it being proposed?
Well, like...
Like, I get the intent, we want to send to the state, but our public schools are paying over $1 million to private schools to take care of these very high-need students, and that need is not going to go away, and it's very likely to go up.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Starkey, could you...
Janice Starkey, Lebanon Street, and also an employee of the Richmond Middle School. I am the financial assistant, and I deal with invoices similar to those that we are speaking of. So in this petition, we are talking about rejecting an expansion of funding, and we already have it in our budget, and I know that there's typically reserves for any additional needs, but we're also talking about until we have full accountability, accountability, transparency, and looking at the vendors and institutions that we use, I would think that wouldn't be an issue, so if that gives a comfort, I hope so.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, over here.
I'm Lois Roland, and I live in Ettna, New Hampshire, Trescott Road. I worked in the Hanover school system, and we are required by federal law, passed in, I think it was '72 or '75, to provide a free and appropriate education for all children who live in our district. Some children, by parental choice, chose to either homeschool or private school, and they might be kicked out. So, and then the school was required to pick up services for these same children. Private schools are not required to meet the needs or to show progress or any such thing, so I certainly approve of this, and I'm sure there are ways of finding some legal binding thing that requires voucher money to have accountability with it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Ellen Rockmore, Stores Road. My, my understanding of this, I think, might address your concern. Your concern, of course, is with students who are legally entitled to an adequate education, whether by the New Hampshire Constitution or federal law. We couldn't possibly take away through a town resolution, we couldn't possibly take away the right to inadequate education that is guaranteed by federal law or the New Hampshire Constitution. So I think we can interpret this resolution as applying to the voucher program, which is not, which is not a vested right of the students.
Thank you. Further thoughts, questions, comments, concerns? Okay, on Article 22, hearing, nothing further. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Article 22 passes. Do I have a petitioner to read Article 23?
Yes, Nancy Welch, College Hill, Hanover. To call on the Hanover Town Manager and the Hanover Police Chief not to enter into or sign any agreement with Immigration and Customs Enforcement, or ICE's 287G program. The 287G is an expensive program that has been criticized for civil rights abuses since it launched in 2006. It has long been criticized for perpetuating and legalizing widespread racial profiling. Studies have shown that communities with 287G agreements spend more money on less effective policing. 287G agreements often target people who pose no risk to public safety and those with no criminal record, and this type of enforcement creates distrust and fear between police and the communities they serve. Additionally, the Department of Homeland Security is now allowed to track, surveil, and target people based on assumptions about their sexual orientation and gender identity. This compounds the risk for some people with informal status and adds new risks for queer transgender folks traveling across borders. And then two asterisks, 287G should not be used in place of federal immigration policy. This resolution will act as an amendment to the Hanover Welcoming Ordinance of 2020.
So moved. Do I have a second? Thank you, a second here in the front row. Any further context, question, concern?
Yes, Carolyn Gordon, 2 Butternut Lane in Hanover. To give a little history, the 287G program is a program that enables municipal, county, or state police departments to enter collaborative agreements with ICE to enforce federal immigration law. Many of the police departments that eagerly embraced them early on later withdrew when they saw the very destructive effects. Unfortunately, the last several months, there's been a frenzy of activity with many departments entering them again. And sadly, both the Grafton County Sheriff's Department and the New Hampshire State Police Department recently entered such agreements. Entering an agreement like this would certainly violate the spirit, if not the letter, of the Welcoming Hanover Ordinance. So why is it needed to have this extra language? Well, I feel, feel that it's critically important in the current climate of intense fear. Indeed, one of the people that was planning to speak tonight decided to refrain out of concern that I, there would be repercussions from ICE against her family members, even though they're documented. And sadly, this fear is well-founded. Moreover, the fact that both the county and the state police have entered into 287G agreements can only serve to create increased fear and mistrust of police in general, which unfairly, it's likely to spill over to distress to the Hanover police. And so it feels important to reinforce the Welcoming Hanover Ordinance and to reassure the community that Hanover police are here to protect everyone by inserting the specific language addressing these agreements.
Thank you. Any further comment, questions, concerns? Yes, sir.
Bill Brown, Stores Road, Hanover. I would like to just voice my support for what the preceding people, especially Gordon, Carolyn, has said. I think that ICE, Border Patrol, has not earned the position of asking for help. And we, we actually, I, you know, I've sworn to support the Constitution of the United States, and I don't believe that their actions do support the Constitution of the United, United States. I mean, when they are interviewing for extended interviews, people, based on their free speech, that's not, that's not in our Constitution. So we should definitely not be supporting them. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions, comments, concerns? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question.
Can you just identify yourself?
Yes, I'm Susan Blom, 76 East Wheelock Street in Hanover. My issue with this is as it's not to enter into or sign any agreement. A lot of times, in, in the, in the news, you'll see ICE there, and you'll see people calling the police, but the police come and assist ICE, and there's been no agreement. So how do you, how do you address that? I would like our police not to assist or even have anything to do with anything that ICE, when they come, well, they're probably already here, when they come and take our, our citizens away. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? Yes, sir. Just identify yourself, if you don't mind.
William King, 17 West Wheelock Street. So the point of clarification, does this adoption of this article prevent the Hanover Town Manager and the Police Chief from entering an agreement? I would hope that they would take the spirit of the town meeting, but does this actually prevent, legally prevent them from entering into an agreement?
Counsel is advised that this is not binding on the town. But the Select Board does set policy, and the ordinance that's proposed to be amended is a Select Board ordinance.
But this is non-binding.
Correct.
Jeremy? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Dr. Rasseas?
And just to speak to the point that Rob made, and I would like, I'm not sure how many folks in the attending tonight know that this is to address our ordinance, the town's ordinance number 38, and I'm just scrolling to the top of it, sorry, I'm on my phone, so it's really small, which is called the Fair and Impartial Policing Ordinance. And I encourage everyone to go to the town website and read it. It's, it's long and comprehensive. And we went, we had a very prolonged discussion over this, over many Select Board meetings, with the Chief of Police, with a lot of other input from a lot of concerned folks. And in, in my opinion, it is quite a strong and formidable, just, just use the same word twice, basically. It is very strong and well-written ordinance.
Thank you. Further thoughts, questions, comments, concerns about Article 23? Yes, sir, in the front?
Bill Fischel, 2 Reed Road again. I wholeheartedly support the purpose of this. I want to know, are we potentially putting our police officers, who aren't voters in this place, for the most part, and can't afford to live here, between a rock and a hard place, where the Select Board says, you do this, and the state and federal law says, you do that? I understand our, they will go to our attorney, who say it's not binding, but they nonetheless work for the town of Hanover, and they're two people in charge, two parties in charge, are telling them different, maybe telling them different things. So I think, I think I agree with perhaps Dr. Rasseas, who's saying, we already have a pretty strong ordinance on this. I don't think we know, maybe we don't have to go any farther to, to reinforce it, and maybe not rave, wave a red flag at the federal authorities to come after people in, in Hanover.
Jeremy? Dr. Rasseas?
I'm sorry, Deb. After Deb.
My name's Deb Nelson, and I live here in Hanover off Greensboro Road. I just think that in this day and age, today, May 2025, when anybody with an Instagram account or watching YouTube clips of ICE agents in Nashville, in Worcester, in California, you pick your place, they are behaving with such horrifying impunity. Everyone I speak to is looking for something to do, some place to take a stand, some way to say, this is not all right. This is not what our Constitution talks about. This is not what we agree to. As Bill said, as a veteran, he signed an oath to the Constitution, which I never had to do. But I would urge this community, this assembly, to vote for this petition article as a way to make a statement. We have so few opportunities to do so, and this is one. And I would urge everyone to vote for it and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Holkman, I'm a resident at Kendall at Hanover, and I thank you for the statement you've just made, but like to, it is a time to make a statement. We have a number of staff members at Kendall who are immigrants, legal immigrants. They have documents and papers. But they are fearful of what will happen to them because they read the newspapers, they watch television, they see what has happened to other people. And this is a way of stating to our workers in this town that we stand behind them, and this is time to take a stand. We have enough problems hiring people here. We don't need to have this kind of discouragement of people to come to a place and work at Kendall. So I really endorse this. Thank you.
Thank you. We have three comments in this area, so I'm going to start with this woman who's standing up, and then the gentleman in the white shirt, and then the person in the middle.
Hessenota, 7 Cummings Road, Japanese-American. Every single member of my family was put in a prison camp during World War II. Every single member. I had two uncles who were in the service, and when they came home to try and help the family because there was a drive-by shooter at night, the county denied the family any protection. So I really want to say that silence equals assent sometimes. And these are really extreme times. So I think it's imperative that we not imply assent by any kind of silence. And I very much appreciate all those who worked to bring this forward. I made a T-shirt that says, "Never Again" means Now, which is ridiculous. It's happening all over the place and has for decades. And we really have to say no.
Thank you.
Jimbley in 603 Hanover Center Road. I spent 30 years sworn to defend the Constitution of this country. This country has laws, has immigration laws, we have borders. I have family members who are citizens of Vietnam. After the war, they came to this country as legal immigrants, and they were welcomed here. I have good friends from Afghanistan and Iraq who fled their country, came to this country, are now citizens, came here legally. ICE exists to fulfill the laws of this country. They make mistakes, probably do. Every police department does, I'm sure. But their mission is to fulfill the Constitution and the laws of the United States. We owe them that respect, and the laws of our country that respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel. Hold on, ma'am. This lady was in next.
This is?
We can hear you, so go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Be sure to identify yourself.
Yes, of course. Dina Rube Romero, 1 Spencer Road, Hanover. I am the daughter of a refugee from Nazi Germany and the granddaughter of people, of, of family members who were murdered in the Holocaust. I do take issue with what the gentleman, with great respect, I take issue, is what the gentleman before me talked about. Yes, of course, there are people who come to this country legally. But I, I want us to remember that many of the people who have come to this country or are coming to this country illegally are people who are fleeing very bad situations in their home country. I think this country has not been totally innocent in, in terms of making those situations in the home countries happen. A lot of these people who are undocumented are the, there's been an assumption by the gentleman or the man in the White House that all these undocumented people are murderers and rapists. I take issue with that, too. Many of these people are the people who are working in the fields, picking our food, working in kitchens, washing dishes from the meals that we order. They are decent people. Many of them are paying taxes. And the way ICE is behaving these days is, it's beyond belief awful. It is unacceptable. ICE is not, our country is not giving the people that have been picked up by ICE, our country's not giving them due process, which we all have a right to have, including undocumented immigrants. We, I have read the Welcoming Ordinance, and I'm not sure if Athos was suggesting that we didn't need this petition article. But we do need it. We need to speak out and be very clear that what ICE is doing, for example, picking up a Tufts graduate student walking in the street in Somerville, men who are hooded and masked, I mean, this really sounds like 1930s Germany. So I 100% support this article, and I really hope you will, too. Thank you.
Pamela Salmon from Kendall. I work with this Nicaraguan family, a whole family, mother, father, aunt, three children, four years old, seven years old, and 12 years old. And it's unbelievable how wonderful they are, how hardworking, how loving, how caring. And when I see how afraid the children are to go to school... And when I see how afraid the children are to go to school because they don't know when they come home if their parent is going to be there. What is happening to the children of our country? And they're all our children, no matter where they came from. They are our children. And what ICE is doing to them and to their families is unconscionable and unkind and cruel. And I have to speak out, and I am not one to speak out, anyone who knows me. I'm terrified of speaking out. But I love these kids, and I've spent my whole life as an ESL teacher, helping children from Cambodia, Laos, and I've seen it. And I just can't bear to see what's happening in our country. And we have to stand up against this brutality. We have to. We really have to, for our children's sake, for the children of the world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Sir?
My name's Doug Deidt. I live on Bridgeman Road, and I'd like to comment on our local police and our state police and county sheriffs. They're all very helpful, they're there to protect us. When we see them, we can see their faces, excuse me, we can see their name tags, we know who they are. And so I think that in light of all that, if there ever is an interaction with ICE in our community, our police should continue that work in protecting citizens of Hanover. And that means standing between, sorry, between ICE and between members of our community and demanding that the face mask comes off, that the IDs are there, and that we know who came into our community and what they did. And I think our police should have that as a policy, that they are there to protect the citizens of Hanover. And, you know, maybe eventually, you know, the black man gets somebody in there, but we ought to know who did it, where they live, and who they are, who they worked for.
Thank you. Okay, final comment from Mr. Dr. Rasseus, and then we will take a vote. Thank you. Yes, I just wanted, the purpose that I spoke up earlier, you know, is really to, we put a lot of work into that ordinance, we went through many of these same discussions, and the product we came up with is very strong. I'm not speaking out or for, or I'm not speaking against this petition article, I just want the public to know that we have done a huge amount of work in this regard. And let me just read the two things out of the ordinance. The Declaration of Purpose, the purpose of this ordinance is to prevent biased policing and other discriminatory practices in any law enforcement-related activity involving an officer of the Hanover Police Department. It goes on, and it draws huge distinction between the civil actions that ICE is doing and criminal actions, which is what our Hanover Police Department is involved with. Our Hanover Police is not involved with enforcing the civil regulations of, that ICE is concerned with. And I wanted to read one more. Department officers do not have authority to enforce federal civil immigration law. In the absence of any criminal conduct, no department officer shall aid or participate in civil immigration enforcement activities carried out by federal or state government. Accordingly, no, and it goes on and on and on. It's a very long document. So that was, that was why I brought that up. I wanted people to be proud of the work that we did, it looks like five years ago now. Thank you. A difficult issue. Ma'am, I'll recognize you, but I want you to add, not repeat, okay?
I have a question about that. If that was five years ago, then why did the police last summer aid the thugs that came and took those people away on the Dartmouth protests? If that was, wasn't, that happened. So that didn't do any good, did it? I'm sorry.
Thank you. Do you want me to respond? No, I mean, I think we can call it. So I'm going to call the question on that. I appreciate the debate, passionate issue, a lot of feelings on it, a lot of important feelings and a lot of important points made. Thank you. So all in favor of Article 23 as drafted, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The article passes. Petition, Article 23 passes. I have results for Article 6, which was our bond ballot article way back at the start. Those who voted in favor were 183, those who voted against were three. So Article 6 passes. Article 24, who would like to read Article 24? Address?
On Kingsford Road. To see if the town will vote to require that all meetings of the Select Board be available for remote participation, either by video or audio in real time through the use of appropriate technology, including but not limited to conference calls, video conferencing, or online meeting platforms. This requirement will apply to all regular and special meetings, and it will ensure that town residents have the ability to participate in Select Board proceedings remotely. The Select Board shall ensure that the necessary technology and support are available for remote participation and that remote participants are provided the opportunity to comment and ask questions during public comment periods and other appropriate segments of meetings.
So move, do I have a second? Have a second? Thank you. Do you want to offer some context?
Yeah. So currently, our Select Board meetings are available to the public to view on livestream thanks to Junction Arts and Media, but the members of the public cannot participate in them without appearing in person to Town Hall. Other committees and boards of the town do not have this practice. The Planning Board has Zoom options available for all of their meetings. So does the Bi-Guac Committee and a couple other boards and committees of the town. I think the town is strengthened by having participation from as many residents of town as possible, and for many people, traveling to Town Hall can be challenging and time-consuming.
Thank you. Anybody want to, sorry, do I have a second? Yeah, I think I have a second on that. Getting tired. Any further thoughts on this, comments, questions, opinions? Kari Hasmus?
So Kari Hasmus of Sawsville Road. I guess I had a question for the town, which is that, again, is this a binding or advisory petition? And then my question for the petitioner was, did you take a petition to the Select Board and ask them, or was the first stop to have a town meeting petition? And if you took it to the Select Board previously, what was their response?
So I'll deep our questions, starting with Rob.
The petition amendment is advisory only.
Second part, Mr. Macri, history of the petition?
Yeah. Given that the town already has the necessary equipment in Town Hall for remote participation as this occurs for other boards and committees, and given that the Select Board formerly had availability for Zoom option during COVID, I thought that a petitioned amendment would, a petitioned article would be the best way to get the town's opinion on whether they could participate in Select Board meetings remotely.
Thank you.
But to clarify, you haven't gone to the Select Board and made the case for why it's important?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Ma'am?
Thank you. Ellen Rockmore, Stores Road. My question is whether the Select Board has a position on this petition and if someone could articulate that position?
I see heads shaking. Mr. Callahan, can you articulate a position?
So we have not discussed this as a Select Board? But we will. Yeah.
Further comments?
Mary Heckan Phillips from 79 Lebanon Street again. Just a question, the wording at the end, the last sentence of the top paragraph, beginning with the word "and," it will ensure that town residents have the ability to participate in Select Board proceedings remotely. My question is, if this were to be honored, would it be the responsibility of the Select Board to ensure that all residents have AV needs, equipment, broadband, internet, that kind of like ability needs to be? That's my question, is, are we setting ourselves up for providing the ability, the equipment and the access to participate remotely? And if that's the case, then I think the intent of the resolution is important, but I am a little worried about creating some sort of obligation that the Select Board would need to honor. And then I think the last is from experience during the COVID period, the early COVID period back in 2020. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think at this point, I was on the Finance Committee here in town, and we were experiencing occasional bombings, for lack of a better term, where folks would enter the Zoom room to participate in a public meeting under a cellphone number, but not identify themselves by name or by video. And then at a certain point in the middle of the meeting, that person would inappropriately turn on their volume from their computer base or telephone, and we would hear terribly inappropriate sounds coming from their location that were obscene and not welcome for the meeting. And so the result at the time was for the meeting to shut down, everyone get out of the Zoom meeting, and then all of us load back in, and it disrupted the business meeting itself. So my concern is what kind of guardrails would be put on this to ensure that that doesn't happen? And I think the reality is that when you have these in-person meetings, you don't have this kind of disruption because someone would be arrested immediately. So I just would like to put that caution out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, standing.
Doug McElroy from Etna. My question is whether this proposal applies to all meetings of all town bodies or only the ones that can actually take action, the statutory bodies such as Select Board, Planning Board. But there are lots of other little committees that meet in strange places. The meetings are noticed, but they certainly don't happen where there is equipment for remote access.
I just want to offer a clarification that the language of this petition refers to the Select Board only.
Hi, Kim Hartman, Montview Drive. So I was a previous school board member for six years. The school board currently has these hybrid meetings where we allow public contribution to all of our meetings. I will say that, you know, when we do that with JAM, if the body is in favor and if the Select Board is open to advice, the school board has already created a public comment policy, which has in here to perhaps address some of the requirements. So what happens if the town's internet goes out? Do you have to stop the meeting? We have kind of these protective clauses that it's a courtesy to be able to provide an online viewing and participation, but if things happen, the show must go on, and other things like that. And so I would just encourage the Select Board to maybe just view what the school board policy is as a good starting point if this. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions, comments, concerns? I'll call the question. All in favor of Article 24, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So I couldn't tell on that one, but I would like people, try this again, when I say yes, hold up your pink card until I tell you to put it down, okay? Hold on, hold on, don't put it up yet, okay? All in favor, say aye. Hold up your card. Okay, keep them up, please. Okay, now put them down. All opposed, say nay. The motion carries. 24 passes. Mr. Macri again.
Hello. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to adopt a policy requiring the use of gender-neutral language in all official town documents, including but not limited to the town charter, ordinances, policies, and the town website. This shall include replacing gendered terms such as selectmen with selectboard, ensuring all future documents reflect inclusive and gender-neutral terminology. Further, to authorize the Select Board to make non-substantive revisions to existing town documents to align with this policy without requiring further town meeting approval.
Thank you. Further context?
I think the point that former Select Board member Nancy Carter raised earlier, it's tried to be addressed by this. The town has consistently sought to refer to the Select Board as the Select Board in recent years, and in fact, last year, the Select Board was majority female. But there are, you know, still some loose ordinances that say selectmen. The state of New Hampshire, to my understanding, considers the terms interchangeable legally. And I think it makes sense, given that women also serve on this board, that we shouldn't say select.
Any further comments, questions, concerns about Article 25? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Do we, yes, sir? Do we need a second? Do I have a second? Thank you. We have a second.
Donald Collish, East Wheelock Street. I support the spirit of this, but in the light of what I know happens at the state where there are fiscal notes, and I was just sort of wondering whether or not there would be any cost to the town of doing this. It is not just, the first sentence says in all official town documents, so it's not just referring to replacing selectmen with selectboard. And whenever there's a rebranding, I think that Dartmouth Hitchcock spent millions of dollars in their rebrand, so I just don't, I'm asking whether or not we could consider whether or not this would require any expense.
Rob?
So the petitioners have given us the suggested language change for most of the ordinances, and we believe that that could be accomplished with in-house staff in a relatively reasonable time.
One question here.
Kari Hasmus, so again, is this then advisory or binding?
Counsel is advised that this is binding.
All right. And would that also include the changes to our town charter, which come under RSAs that require town votes? And I, so we would have to have a town vote to change the town charter?
This vote would constitute that.
Right, but I don't think town meeting has the ability to tell the Select Board that they can ignore state law.
We will vet that issue with counsel.
Okay, so that's just, it's not easy to amend the.
To the extent any mandate is unlawful, it can't be complied with, so. Final thoughts? Okay, calling the question, Article 25. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 25 passes. Article 25 passes. Article 26, "To transact any other business that may legally be brought before this town meeting." Do I have a second? Thank you. Any conclusory thoughts, questions, comments, or concerns? Sir?
My name's David Vinsallet. We started the meeting off with Nancy Carter, leading the Pledge of Allegiance, which ends with, we're all under God, we're supposed to be, have liberty and freedom. I served 25 years in the United States Army, defending the Constitution from all enemies, foreign and domestic. The town and college have polluted our water in violation of the Clean Water Act and falsely imprisoned my family. Meanwhile, I've been canceled. Nothing appears in the papers, magazines, and I'm not allowed on the internet locally. New Hampshire DOJ and FBI refuse to take my calls. Select Board refuses to answer questions. The Select Board ordered a fence around my property. Athos Rassius and Joanna Whitcomb were on the board at the time. They turned our property into a concentration camp for my wife, Anna. Anna is Ukrainian Jew and was an immigrant at the time she was housed at our home with no fire lane and no driveway. We were held for two years, 25 and a half months, by Mr. Hausmann. The zoning administrator directed an illegal fence blocking our driveway and emergency access. This is a state and federal crime. Police and fire failed to free us. Still, no apology from any Hanover government officials. I was finally able to get the state court to order my release. Although I reported his state and federal crimes to the police and to the Select Board, Robert Hausmann has been promoted, despite the fact that he abused human beings, nine of us. I was housing people for homeless people, minorities, religious minorities, disabled veterans, and homeless people. And the Select Board refuses to put his actions on the agenda for discussion. The last three town managers have all refused to put me on the agenda so that the Select Board can look into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vinsallet. Any further business before the Hanover Town Meeting? I will take a motion to adjourn. Seconded? Thank you, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thus concludes the town meeting. Thank you very much.